Good evening. I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the City of Calistoga City Council. Today is Tuesday, February 20th at exactly 6:00 PM. City Clerk Flamson, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you very much. Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
Yes.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Kraus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunstford.
Here.
Mayor Canning.
Here. If you haven't already done so, please silence or put on mute your cellphones. We'd appreciate that. And we'll all stand for a salute to the flag, after which we'll maintain a moment of silence for the victims of the Parkland, Florida shooting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We'll now move on to oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any requests during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the council. I do not have any speaker cards under oral communication. Is there anyone wishing to address the council on an item on the consent calendar or not on the agenda? All right, not seeing anyone moving toward the podium. I will close oral communication and will entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda as presented unless a modification is requested.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunstford, a second by Councilmember Barnes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excellent. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
Well, I just want to refer to what happened in Florida recently, and I just want to, you know, to encourage the community and to pay more attention to our children's. Our children's are very vulnerable right now. They're going through a lot of issues emotionally and, you know, some physical also. So if we can all keep eye on them and encourage them, not judge them, but try to help them because, you know, we never know when they're going through and look what happened when nobody pays attention to a child. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barnes.
Ah, yes. In the same vein, we just had some comments from Iris and a moment of silence for the poor kids in Florida. I would like to make sure that this community has plans in place for the police department and the school district for the horrible possibility that that could happen here. I would call on the city manager to get with Police Chief Selaya and the new superintendent of schools to make sure that we are doing everything possible to prevent that happening here and if a horrible thing that did happen here, how, what is in place, how we would approach it, what our response would be. Could you do that for us, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kraus.
I agree with Jim that planning is, needs to be positive. I don't know that the police department would want to make public their response.
But that they have one.
Tactics in a situation like that. But I agree. I would feel better if we knew that the possibility of that kind of an emergency.
Yeah, we plan for fires, we plan for floods, we plan for earthquakes. Unfortunately, we have to plan for mass murder now.
Anything else, Councilmember Kraus?
No.
Vice Mayor Dunstford.
I would support that effort.
Thank you. And the only comment to that, obviously horrific situation is, if there's anything positive that may come of it, is we've seen an incredible amount of civic engagement, not just in Florida, but across the country with our youth. Early years, I was listening to NPR this afternoon about three young people running for governor of the state of Kansas because they're allowed to. But in their attitude and their perception of the world around them and the country around them and in listening to some of the younger folks speaking from Florida, they are certainly going to work hard to get the attention of their electeds. And I would encourage our community, as I have when I speak to our high school students, if there's something you're not happy with in your own community, you are never too young to express that because we not only serve those who vote, we serve all those that live in this community. So make sure we express that and see that type of engagement in our community as well. City manager's report. City Manager Feek.
Nothing this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Proclamations, presentations, and awards. We have one proclamation this evening that I'm very happy to be presenting. I was at this event by the Boys and Girls Club of St. Helena in Calistoga, excuse me, the Boys and Girls Club of Calistoga in St. Helena, as I like to call it, to witness and actually be a part of this. City of Calistoga proclamation. Proclamation of honor for Lucas Marquez. Whereas Lucas Marquez has been a lifelong resident of the city of Calistoga and currently attends Calistoga High School, and whereas Lucas Marquez has participated and contributed to the Boys and Girls Club of Calistoga since 2012, and whereas Lucas embodies a positive engaged attitude and has an excellent, has been an excellent example to his peers by demonstrating character and bravery as he transitions through his life, and whereas Lucas shares his love of laughter and all that he approaches and has a maturity and persistence that are far beyond his 15 years, and whereas Lucas has recently been selected as the 2018 Boys and Girls Club of Calistoga in St. Helena Youth of the Year. Now therefore be it resolved that on behalf of the City of Calistoga, I, Chris Canning, Mayor, do hereby issue this proclamation honoring Lucas Marquez for his achievement as Youth of the Year and for his continued service to our community. Signed and sealed this 20th day of February in the year 2018. Lucas, I will meet you at the podium.
You're not obliged, but you're welcome to make comments if you'd like.
Thank you. Um, I don't know why I'm crying.
It's allowed.
We don't either, but that doesn't keep us from talking.
Um, I'd like to thank Chris and everybody who accepts me for who I am or what I do. Um, just thank you, Clint, Mom Dante, um, just everyone who knows what it's like or has an idea of what it's like to be left out. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just want to share that I know Lucas since he was a little kid and he was one of my first students at the program at Casa de la Cultura. And I'm so proud to see the great person he becomes. And he's a good sample that we all can do for our kids, to give them support, to give them love, not only as a parent, but also as a community.
And we've already discussed and we're figuring out the math of his first mayoral run. I think it's like 20, 20-something?
Yes.
So congratulations and a well-deserved recognition by the Boys and Girls Club and certainly by your home community. So thanks for all that you do and keep doing. So Clint, I can't let a moment go by without saying thank you for what you do over at the teen center. I've seen some of that work. I've talked to some of those kids. Pretty incredible. So thank you very much. All right, moving on. You don't have to stay for the whole thing, but your civic engagement might want you to sit through this. That's your breakaway if you need to. All right, consent calendar. We'll entertain a motion to move the consent calendar as presented unless any modifications or pulls are requested.
I would like to have one item pulled, if I might.
Sure.
And that would be the item number five, professional service agreement with the COF and Associates.
All right. Anyone else would like an item pulled? All right, I'll entertain a motion to move the consent calendar excluding item number five.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Barnes, a second by Vice Mayor Dunstford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I have a-
Councilmember Kraus.
I have a question for the city manager. I agree with these studies and making sure that we stay competitive on the labor market. I have a question. You are, this contract authorizes the full study of one position, one classification, and then a salary survey for all the rest. Is that correct? Am I reading this correctly?
No. If you look, there are several different, they actually look at all the positions that the city currently has. In addition, they look at part-time positions as well. So they look at all of them and determine based on the market how we compare to the 11 cities. They look at all the positions.
Okay, because I thought I got in this that we were looking at the classification issues with one management position and then the salary issues for everybody else.
What you may, what you may have specifically looked at is if the last time we did the classification and compensation study, the city spent a lot more time and more money making sure that all of our position classifications were correct. In this one, there's a couple positions that we've added, like the building official position, which is technically new. And we want to make sure that we're on par with other cities, other agencies. So there are some minor classifications that they are looking at, like a building official. We reclassified one to senior planner slash assistant to the city manager position. So they are going to look at those positions that have been added since the last classification study.
Okay. And we also now have some full-time firefighter positions.
Correct.
So are those positions going to be looked at to make sure that they are correctly compensated?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have nothing else, then.
Any other questions? All right. Would you like to move on item number five?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution for professional services with the COF and Associates.
I second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus. We have a second by Councilmember Lopez Ortega. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. Moving on, public hearings. We have three public hearings this evening. The first item, item number eight, consideration of amendments to the Calistoga Municipal Code to expand opportunities for contractor storage yard, Z O A 2017-3. The recommended action this evening, council, is following a public hearing, introduce the ordinance and waive its first reading. Taking us through this item will be Director Goldberg. Lynn, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Plan Commission expressed concern about the lack of suitable sites within the city limits for such businesses as landscape contractors, tree and equipment maintenance services, and building contractors. As you may know, we have very few industrially zoned properties in the city, and this leads to some business owners having to park their vehicles and equipment at their homes or at non-sanctioned locations around town. And therefore, the Plan Commission asked staff to explore other potential locations for these types of operations. Working with the commission, we identified the rural residential zoning districts as the most appropriate properties since these are located on the outskirts of the city and are likely to be large. And also, certain non-residential uses are already allowed in these districts, such as commercial farms and wineries. So the commission is recommending that the zoning warrants be amended to allow contractor storage yards, add a definition for them, and allow them by conditional use permit in the rural residential zoning districts. The use permit process would provide an opportunity for the commission to evaluate each proposal individually and assure the compatibility of an operation with existing and future uses in the vicinity. You'll notice that in the definition, this is supposed to be directed at a limited number of business-related vehicles, equipment, and/or materials stored. So it's not meant to be a wholesale large yard. It'd just be small operations. So they're recommending approval of the zoning warrants amendment to the council.
Thank you, Director Goldberg. Councilmembers, any questions before I open this up to the public hearing? Councilmember Barnes?
No.
Oh, I saw you taking notes. I thought you had-
No.
All right. Anyone in the public? This is a public hearing on this matter. Anyone in the public with an, I don't have a speaker card on this item, but anyone interested in commenting on this? All right, I will close the public hearing and I will bring it back to the council for further discussion. Or I will entertain a motion on this item as presented.
Just one quick question.
Please.
Do the neighbors of these places, do they get notified properly?
Yes, they would receive a notice of the public hearing for the use permit.
Is that the 300-foot or the 500-foot?
That's 300.
300 feet?
Yeah.
And this ordinance is only in the areas outlined in yellow, correct?
Yes.
All right, any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion as presented.
I will make a motion that we adopt the attached ordinance and waive the first reading. And at this point, do I read the title?
You do, my-
Okay. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Calistoga amending Title 17 zoning to add a definition for, quote, contractor storage yards, end quote, and allow them by use permit in the RR and RR-H zoning districts, Z O A 2017-3.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Kraus. We have a second by Councilmember Barnes. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oops, sorry. Roll call. Thank you. I was just checking to make sure you're paying attention, Kathy. We have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraus?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dunstford?
Aye.
Mayor Canning?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Director Goldberg. Moving on to item number nine, consideration of an amendment to the Calistoga Municipal Code to reinstate the inclusionary housing requirement for rental housing projects, Z O A 2017-4. Recommended action, following a public hearing, introduce the ordinance and waive its first reading. Director Goldberg, back on.
Thank you. In order to promote the provision of affordable housing, the city requires residential ownership projects, development projects of five or more units to include a share of affordable units that is affordable to lower and moderate income households. And prior to 2015, this inclusionary requirement, which is what this concept is called, also applied to rental housing projects. In 2015, there was a court decision that interpreted the limitation on rents to be a form of rent control. And so in order to be consistent with this decision, we amended the zoning code to exempt rental projects from the inclusionary requirement. Subsequently, last year, the state passed a law that says it can be applied to rental housing projects. So we are recommending that that requirement be reinstated. And also wanted to note as a small item that we found an error in one of the development regulations for the R3 zoning districts. So we'd like to fold that into this ordinance. It's strictly an error, typographic error. So we'd just like to clean up that section of the zoning code. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any questions before I open it to the public?
I know you're not a lawyer, but I'm assuming that this will come under some kind of legal action. The governor declares California legislature's intent to supersede this court decision to the extent that it conflicts with local jurisdictions. I can see a wave of lawsuits coming when a governor supersedes law. I mean, I think-
I actually haven't heard of any yet.
Really?
Yes. So I hope that holds true because-
I do, too.
I think we could see a number of rental housing projects coming in the future to the city.
Any other comments, but councilmembers? All right, this is a public hearing. I will open this to the public. I do not have any speaker cards on this item. Anyone interested in commenting on this topic? All right, not seeing anyone motioning. I will close the public hearing, Kathy, and I will bring it back to the council for further discussion or we'll entertain a motion as suggested. And this is a request for introduction of the ordinance and waive its first reading.
Okay, I'll do it again.
You did so well the first time.
I will, I will make a motion that we introduce the ordinance and waive the first reading. The ordinance is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Calistoga, amending Chapter 17.08 Affordable Housing of Title 17 zoning to reinstate the inclusionary housing requirement for rental housing projects, Z O A 2017-4.
Thank you. Would anyone like to second that?
I'll second it again.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Councilmember Barnes. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraus?
Aye.
Councilmember Barnes?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez Ortega?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dunstford?
Aye.
Mayor Canning?
Aye. Thank you. Lynn, thank you very much. That's some further work getting us hopefully closer to some more housing that's affordable in the city of Calistoga. Thank you. Moving on to item number 10, also a public hearing matter. Consideration of resolution pursuant to the Measure T program approving the city's maintenance of effort amount and the city's five-year list of projects and authorizing the city manager to execute the master funding agreement between Napa Valley Transportation Authority, the tax agency, and the city of Calistoga. The recommended action this evening, after presentation, is to adopt the resolutions. Taking us through this will be Director Kern, both city engineer and director of Public Works. Welcome back, Mike.
Thank you. Mike Kern, Public Works Director. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. We have a before you this evening is a public hearing to talk about Measure T expenditures and five-year plan. If you recall, Measure T is a half-cent sales tax that was enacted by the Napa County voters in 2012. It's intended to complement the city's prior level of investment made in road maintenance efforts for the fiscal year starting in 2007-08 and ending in 09-10. And the projected revenues from the Measure T for Calistoga range from $350,000 in the first year to just under $379,000 in 22-23. There are some requisite things that need to be accomplished before you, before we can achieve or get any of the money. We have to calculate what our three-year level of effort or maintenance of effort was in those three years. We have to develop a five-year expenditure plan for traffic, transportation, infrastructure, maintenance, and repair. A master funding agreement needs to be executed between the city and Napa Valley Transportation Authority Tax Agency. And then we also have to identify Class 1 or Class, yeah, Class 1 bicycle facility improvements that equal approximately 7% of the total Measure T revenues generated. To determine our maintenance of effort, or MO, I went through our three-year final budgets for those three years. We're allowed to exclude non-general fund special revenues such as gas tax, impact fees, grants, or other one-time, non-routine expenditures. Typical expenditures include sidewalk repairs, ADA ramps, street sweeping, stormwater management, and basic road reconstruction. Our three-year MO was calculated to be $287,001. So that is what we will need to contribute going forward for the life of the measure, specifically from the general fund, in order to be eligible to receive the Measure T revenues. So this is a, it's really hard to read, but this is basically the summation of basically five years of operating budgets. If you recall, there's Senate Bill Number 1 that is also a supplemental gas tax. We have to do the same thing, calculate the maintenance of effort, but it's three different fiscal years. It's basically two more beyond what the Measure T fund called for. So while I was going through the exercise, I just did both of them at the same time. But this is how I determined that our maintenance of effort is $287,001. Our maintenance of effort for SB1 is $190,387. So it's less than our Measure T MO. So that is the determinant that we have to obligate. Clear as mud?
Good.
For our five-year expenditure plan, I focused on two primary areas, a street maintenance and sidewalk maintenance. To me, I tried to strike a balance between the two, recognizing that both of them are critical pieces of infrastructure. I used a combination of scenarios 1 and 2 from the 2017 Payment Condition Index Report, focusing on major arterials and collector routes for the first five years, trying to get ahead of the biggest bang for our buck given the volume of traffic that are on those roads. I estimated three funding sources for the projected expenditure plan, our maintenance of effort, the $287,000, the Measure T revenue, $350,000, and SB1, which is estimated to be $325,000 in the first fiscal year. And then there are escalators on the SB1 and the Measure T money, about 2.5% a year, just based on incremental growth that may occur. The recommended plan invests just under $5 million in street maintenance over the next five years. It increases our payment condition index by approximately 17 points, from 67 to 70 over that five-year window, and will expend about $100,000 a year in sidewalk replacement, which is basically consistent with the 2011 sidewalk repair policy that was previously adopted.
Can you pause for one second?
Yes.
So that's 17 points or seven points?
17 points.
So taking us from 63 to 80?
Oh.
Or is it taking us from 53 to 70?
It-
That puts all your math in question.
Yeah, it does.
If I could, if I could step in, our current PCI is 53. So it's from 53 to 70.
I got the math right. I just had the wrong-
Hit the wrong-
It's a typo. Okay. All right. You're off the hook.
Much better.
But 70 is the number that we're, we're kind of shooting for.
Perfect. Thank you.
I apologize for that.
That's all right. Dylan threw you a buoy. I was going to let you float a little while.
I get one, I get one, one per year, so.
Write that down, Kathy.
This is the five-year expenditure plan that I came up with. Basically, the first project will be Washington Street from Lincoln to Berry, and then from Berry to Oak. So we'll do that in the first year. We'll also invest $100,000 in sidewalk repair, and then we will also start programming for the next fiscal year. So I want to be designing next year's project this year so that we're always, we always have a project in the queue and we're always ready to go next time. And that's an eligible expenditure. For the sidewalk replacement program, what I did was, in your staff report, there is a map that previously broke the city down into sectors or quadrants, with the downtown area being what we call Sector A, and then expanding outward like a target to Sector B, C, and D. And we've done some cursory analysis on how much maintenance and repair needs to be done on the sidewalks, and it's pretty extensive in each of those sectors. So I basically split the sectors in half with Washington kind of being the divider. So we'll go north of Washington and south of Washington in Sector A, and we'll go north of Washington and south of Washington in Sector B, and then north in Sector C. That'll take us for, out to five years. If there's additional resources, we can, we can go a little faster, but the intent is to invest about $100,000 every year, Sector A getting $200,000 in the first two years, Sector B getting $200,000 in the second two years, and then Sector C getting $100,000 in the fifth year.
Okay.
The second project would be Grant Street from Garnet Creek Court to Greenwood. So that's that bad road that people complain about all the time coming in and out of town. So that's in year two. Year three would be Lake Street from Grant to Lincoln. And then we would do some slurry seal on Petrified Forest Road, and then the connector road on Cedar Street that goes into Rancho D. The fourth year would be Cedar Street from Lincoln to Spring, and then First Street from Washington to Fairway. from Washington to Fairway. I put Cedar Street in the further out years because we know that there's going to have to be some significant utility work done prior to going in and repairing that street. And I want to get it on the books and get it planned for activity. And then, as we move forward, we'll continue to start focusing on the local streets that are what I'll call local collectors, that provide continuity and communication to the community. So Cedar would be one, Myrtle would be one, and we'd probably look at Fairway and what kinds of things we need to do down there. But my intent is to try and program about $1 million in the street work on an annual basis, pretty much syncs up with the anticipated revenues that we'll have, so that we're not overextending ourselves just because we think we might have the money. I'm trying to be conservative in what the resources are and marrying that up with a project that kind of fits within the resources that we're going to have. Then in the last year, Fairway, Lincoln to Lake, Washington from Gerard to Camp, and then the sidewalk repair. So that's kind of how I've planned this out, looking at primarily where are the major corridors for the traffic that, as I see them, and how we can improve those streets that are getting hammered, just with the volume of traffic.
So Mike, this excludes the paused work that started in the fall that is outside of this scope?
That's, that's work under the, under the bridge, if you will.
Still to be done, but not part of this.
But it's not part of this because we can't, we can't take credit for work that we've done prior to the effective date of the ordinance.
Okay.
Or the effective date of SB 1. So SB 1 became effective January 1 of this year. So for the first six months of this calendar year, whatever work we do, we can, we can subscribe some of that SB 1 money if we choose to.
All right, thank you.
I spoke earlier about the Class 1 Bicycle Facilities. As part of the measure, they had to put a sweetener in the ordinance to get the voters to approve it, which was, we're going to invest roughly 7% of non-Measure T revenue on a countywide basis collectively from all jurisdictions, equal to basically 7% of what that Measure T revenue is. It's an obligation that we have to fulfill collectively, not individually, but the taxing authority is asking for the agencies to identify projects that they think they might be investing in, so that they can get a level of comfort, that everybody acknowledges what that investment needs to be, and they basically agree to it. If we don't collectively meet our Class 1 obligation, then those funds can be withheld in prior, prior out years. Couple of ways to look at it. A conservative approach would be that we basically set aside a cash equivalent, which for our community would be roughly $24,000 for the first year, escalating to just over $25,000 in the fifth year. Alternately, we can identify projects that we think that we have in the queue, or that we're going to be investing in separate and apart. One that we know is on the books, it's just a matter of when it gets started, is the Vine Trail from St. Helena to Calistoga. Historically, the city has pledged $150,000 towards that as a local match for the, for the grant that the NVTA and the Vine Trail Coalition got. So that's, that's one way that we can crack our local nut. The other way would be to, as we move forward with the Comfort Station and the trailhead improvements at Lake and the trail, or excuse me, Lincoln and the trail, that level of investment could also go towards that. So we've, we've got a couple of options. We don't need to do anything other than just let the taxing authority know that these are the two projects that we have in mind, and as a fallback, we're committed to, you know, setting aside some additional resources to meet our obligation.
And we're making the investment in the Class 1 Bicycle Facilities, not because we have to, but because it's a good idea?
The ordinance says we have to, but it is, it is the right thing to do for the right reason.
We do so willingly. Thank you.
Consistency with council goals and environmental review. The projects that we've identified conform to Council Goal 3, establish and improve city infrastructure. Objectives 3 and 4 provide long-term maintenance and repair of street, city sidewalks, and support efforts for funding bridge and street maintenance and repair. The projects that we've identified are exempt from SEQA because they're existing, and we're not replacing them with anything that would be growth-inducing or expanding more than what they're currently serving. So we're going to use that exemption and use it well. Fiscal impact, there are no immediate fiscal impacts to the, to the city's budget. I mentioned earlier, we will need to obligate $287,000 of general fund money towards street projects to meet our MO obligation, and as planned and as estimated, the expenses that we will incur over the next five years will exceed the anticipated revenues by just over $400,000. It varies year to year, and, you know, that's kind of the best estimate that I have right now, depending on how, how things come in and how, what the price of asphalt is. But I'm just giving you a heads up that there is an additional nut that will possibly, probably have to be put in there. It doesn't necessarily have to be general fund money. It could be impact fee money or other sources, but there is a delta there as, as projected. And then we have to demonstrate that we are committed to doing the right thing for the right reasons for the Class A bike facilities or Class 1 bike facilities. With that, I'm here to answer any questions you may have. This is a public hearing. At the close of the public hearing, we're recommending that your council adopt two resolutions, one, adopting the maintenance of effort of $287,001, and then also approving the five-year expenditure plan, and then by, by motion order authorize the city manager to execute the master agreement with the NVTA TA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmembers, any questions?
I have a... I have a couple of them. One, I'm very pleased to see that we're going to have these kinds of resources available to fix the streets because until recently, when water rates became the topic of conversation in town, the lousy condition of the streets were a topic. So I have three questions. First question is, in our maintenance of effort, which is, seems to be pretty modest, $285,000, something like that. If we contribute more general fund money than what is our required maintenance of effort, does that come back at some time to a new maintenance of effort level? So let's say we increase our funds, let's say $100,000 a year. At the end of five years, is now our maintenance of effort level 385,000, or is it still 285,000? Or is there an inflation thing in there?
I don't believe there's any inflationary clauses in the Measure T ordinance. So my answer is going to be, I don't believe that you will be penalized for ongoing increased MO if you choose to augment your expenses in any one given fiscal year.
Because, as you've observed, we've got another $400,000 that we may have to come up with. So the second fall is, I know that we have had some delays in getting projects done, not because of the funding issue, but because of staff issue with getting the bids out and engineering work done and like that. I know that we hired John Draper. Is he still retained?
Yes.
By us, and he will be working on these projects?
He'll, it's possible that he'll be working on them. I've got him working on the Washington reconstruction. I've also got him working on the Brandon Street and Lincoln Crosswalk improvements. He's also helping on Lake Street as well. He will most likely act as a project manager, and then shepherding the consultants through the actual design process.
Okay.
And part of the reason that I programmed or plugged in the, the next year's design is more for a discipline, to make sure that we're keeping on track of those things sooner rather than later.
Okay. And the last question is, NCTPA is going to manage this master funding agreement. What's their fee?
Well, NVTA takes a haircut on everything that comes through the gate.
You know, I understand that. I'm just wondering, are we getting a crew cut this time, or is it getting styled a little bit?
It's getting styled a little bit. I think the NVTA taxing authority is basically the Board of Supervisors, acting as that taxing authority. So their, their effort and the work that they need to do is already built into their, their programmed workload. And then the Oversight Committee gets, it's not the Oversight Committee, it's the, I'll call it the Oversight Committee, it's basically the Measure A Oversight Committee, they have a Measure T Oversight Committee. Now, they get a small stipend for every time they meet. I think it's $150 a meeting. They probably meet four times a year.
Okay.
Jim, you look puzzled.
I am puzzled. First question, the MOE, the $287,001, is that for the 20-year life?
25-year life.
25-year life, so it doesn't get rejiggered every five or 10 or whatever?
The only way that that could happen would be for the ordinance to be amended, and because it was a voter initiative, it would have to go back to the voters to change that.
Okay. Second, how did they, it's based on sales tax, correct?
Correct.
So by their calculations, St. Helena gets 5.9% of all funds on a pro rata basis. We get 2.7% of the fund. St. Helena has more than double our sales tax. Is that right?
The wine.
Wine business? Is there sales tax?
I think, if memory serves me correctly, part of the way this was divided up is based on the condition of the streets and...
No.
No?
It's purely formula-driven, and...
Is there sales tax on lodging or just TOT?
There is on TOT, but this is, it doesn't figure into sales tax. Our TOT, our lodging taxes, like, five times theirs in terms of revenue.
But there is not a separate sales tax?
No.
True, okay.
No, that, the TOT is taxed.
Yeah, that would answer my question.
So St. Helena also has some pretty good-sized industrial developments that spin out, you know, Central Valley Builders spins off probably a significant amount of tax revenue.
And then you mentioned the Measure T Oversight Committee. I sat on the Measure A Oversight Committee for five years. We met once a quarter. There were no stipends on that. I didn't see anything about a stipend in here either.
So in the master agreement, it's on Section 11D2.
I missed it.
It's on...
So all those years, I couldn't...
Well, I think, I think...
It was added after the feedback.
It was added after that, so...
They couldn't get anybody as noble as you to take the job, that's it.
As I report is what I've been told.
And how much is it?
I think it's $150 a meeting per...
Well, we need a representative, don't we?
There was a call for, I think, a CPA, and they were looking for a CPA to be on the...
Because it used to be a Citizens Oversight Committee on Measure A.
One of the, one of the key learnings that came out of Measure A, as you recall, is it was very difficult to get citizens to sit on this, especially the further north up the valley you went.
Yes, it was.
So some of the feedback they got was, well, you need to encourage people to sit and then serve because it meets in Napa.
And it, and it was also very poorly worded. You know, we ended up in one lawsuit on Measure A, the use of Measure A funds, we were vindicated, but it costs us, costs us legal fees to be vindicated.
There's, there's, there are some issues, I won't say issues, but there are some ambiguities in the, in the current Measure T ordinance related to what qualifies for, you know, an expenditure. We're trying to be as flexible or push for the greatest flexibility in the interpretation of that.
I would encourage that because the lawsuits were quite hefty under Measure A.
Right. Some, a couple of the agencies have been pushing to get some, you know, higher degree of clarity on that, and we, as a group at the Oversight, or at the Advisory Committee, have told them to pull back a little bit. We want to get this thing started, gain some confidence with the, with the citizens and the residents of the community and the county, and also with the Oversight Group, and then somewhere down the road, start asking those more difficult questions.
Thank you.
Any other council members with questions? All right, this is a public hearing. I will, thank you, Mike. I will open this to the public for any questions or comments on this. I do not have any speaker cards. Mr. Harkin, can you turn on the lights for us, please? Thank you. Anyone have any comment wish to address this matter? All right, Kathy, I will close the public hearing at this time, bring it back to the council for any further discussion, or we'll entertain a motion as presented, and as mentioned, there are two items to move tonight, neither of which needs a full reading, Gary. So, no further discussion. Would anyone like to make a motion on the first element of this, which is the acceptance of the projects under Measure T programming?
I'll move it.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember Barnes, we have a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. We have a second matter which authorizes the city manager to take these actions.
No, it's the, uh...
I'm sorry.
Five-year...
Five-year, sorry, thank you.
Two, two items. The first one is a resolution approving the MO.
Which we just did.
Did you? I thought you did the five-year.
Nope, we did the MO.
Okay.
All right, we did the projects first. Yep. Now, the second one, Mike, that you would like is the MO. We just moved the MO.
We just moved the maintenance of effort.
Yeah. Okay. Now, now you want two. We got it. I'm doing it the way you suggested, that, when you were at the podium. Would anyone like to entertain a motion for the next item?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, a second by Vice Mayor Dunsford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. So we've moved the MO, and we've authorized the city manager to act, so we can now move on. Anything else on this item, Mike?
Got it covered.
All right, thank you very much. That is the end of the public hearings. We now move on to General Government, item number 11. To receive a mid-year financial update regarding the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget and adopt the budget adjustments as recommended, the action this evening is to adopt the resolution. Taking us through this, I believe, will be Administrative Services Director Gloria Leon. Gloria, welcome back.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for allowing me to present to you the mid-year review for 2017-18. So back in June of 2017, the fiscal year 2017-18 budget was adopted, and over the last six months, there have been several unanticipated demands on the budget that require budget adjustments. These adjustments are outlined in the staff report, and you've also got with the resolution attached what those budget adjustments are. On that list, there's also the budget adjustments that have already been approved by council at previous city council meetings.
Everyone see that screen all right? You need the lights off. You're okay? All right.
So we're going to be looking at our 1617 actuals, which were also presented back in January when the CPA auditing firm, RJ Riccardi, was here. We'll look at the 1718 adopted budget with adjustments to assumptions and actuals through December 31, 2017, and we'll look at our major funds, general fund, water, the water capital improvement fund, the wastewater, the wastewater capital improvement, the equipment replacement fund, and the special revenue funds. So this next chart shows you where we ended in 1617 actuals, and again, was presented to you about a month ago. General fund ended at 8.455,573. The, so it improved quite a bit from 6.9 million to 8.4 million. Water operations ended at $819,040. Water capital, 1.5 million, and the reason for the water capital having as much as it did was because it got one-time impact fees of 1.7 million. And then the wastewater operations ended with a little over $1 million in the fund, and then the wastewater capital, 1.8 million, and again, there was one... fund, and then the wastewater capital, 1.8 million, and again, there was one-time impact fees of two, almost $3 million in the wastewater. And these one-time impact fees came from the Boys and Girls Club, Silver Rose, and the 611 Washington Street project. And then our equipment replacement fund ended at 588,130, and then our special revenues at 3.8 million.
Thank you.
So we did quite well. So the next chart here is our revenues as of December 31st, and you can see where we're at. Property tax, we're at 57%, which is one of our major revenue sources. Our sales tax, 39%, and again, even though it says December 31st, we're, our sales tax are two months behind when we receive those. TOT, 45% of the budget, and I'll talk a little bit more about this in the next slide. And then you can see our other revenue sources, what we received in total at December 31st, 5.1 million, which is 47% of our revised budget. We are recommending 307,710 in budget adjustments for our revenues, and of course, the biggest revenue decrease is our transit occupancy tax. And the reason for this is because of the Tubbs fire that happened in October, and we had to close down businesses for several weeks. Fortunately, the city does purchase business interruption insurance for general revenues and has filed a claim for those, for the sales tax and our TOT. And we anticipate we'll receive a future insurance payment equal to 97.5% of projected revenues for the month of October. However, it is unknown when we will receive these revenues, so they have not been projected into this mid-year adjustment. So this chart's kind of a little bit small to see from here, but there are some copies in the back, and this has to do with the transit occupancy tax history. The graph itself is a five-year actials, and the 17-18 is also in actials because we've got our actials through December. And you can see in October, that very first graph there, how much we had a reduction in October compared to the prior five years. And then to the right in the box there, you can see what our total revenues have been through December, and you can see from 16-17 to 17-18, $270,000 less than a year ago. And though in the prior graph, you saw that about 49% of our budget through December, are, we are actually at, in prior years, we've been at least at 55% through December, so we're about 6% less than what we had normally received in the past. This next graph is our expenditures through December 31st, 2017. These are for the general fund, these are our major departments. We're at four point, almost 4.5 million of expenditures, which is 47% of our budget. We're recommending some adjustments, and I think part of the biggest one is the fire services, and we're recommending 99,723 an adjustment. However, a couple of months back, we did bring to you the budget adjustment to include to hire three full-time firefighters. And the other expenditures are due again to the Tubbs fire, and why we've had an increase in some of those expenditures at December 31st. This next graph is our preliminary numbers that we have so far, and how the Tubbs fire has impacted us in our expenditures. We've been working with the FEMA crew, we've been meeting with them on a weekly basis and gathering all the numbers, and to date, this is what we have so far as far as expenditures go. We've got the fire department, this is basically just on overtime, and the use of the engines, 102,000, the police department, 35,000 in overtime, the EOC, which is the administrative staff, $140,000, Public Works, 26,000, and then we have some projects that were identified by the Public Works Department, the Kimball Water, the Grant Street, Myrdledale Road, and then Equipment and Contents, and then we've got some vendor invoices that have also been attributed to the Tubbs fire. So a little bit over a million dollars so far to date that we've had from the Tubbs fire, and we're still working more on those numbers, gathering more additional costs. I don't know if anybody has any questions in particular on any of those projects, and Mike Kern can actually probably let you know what exactly those impacts were.
So these are costs not recoverable by our current insurance policies, correct?
I think maybe...
One thing, one thing I'd answer, Mayor, first, just to clarify, is some of the items on here, like the Grant Street Myrdledale Road project, is a project we're requesting funding for. So we haven't actually incurred $600,000 yet, but we're trying to get FEMA funding to do some road repair work there. The bulk of these costs are costs that are eligible for reimbursement, either through FEMA or through insurance. Typically, the way FEMA works is if you have insurance and it covers it, then it gets covered through insurance. So basically, we've been directed by FEMA to give them the list of everything, and they also have copies of all of our labor agreements, as well as all of our insurance documents, and they'll go through with a fine-tooth comb and pick out what's eligible for reimbursement through FEMA and what's not. At this point, all we've been told is to give them the full project list. I do believe that anything associated with the building, so any structure damage, Sharps Team Museum had a little bit on the corner, if you've noticed, you know, that'll be covered, that's an example of something covered through insurance. Damage out at the pool, damaged fence, tree removal, many of those items will be covered through insurance. Some of the larger items, the staff costs associated to the fire emergency, those will all be covered through FEMA.
I think they cover 75%.
Correct, and Cal OES will cover another large portion as well.
Okay, and the, having been through some of these in the past, their favorite thing is to deny. Give it to us what you think it is and everything, and then they go, oh, she was, no. So, and don't take no for an answer.
Our, our approach is that we're asking for everything, we're not going to manage the claim for them, we're going to ask for everything we can, everything we think is eligible, we're going to push hard to get every penny recovered that we can, either through insurance or through FEMA.
The City of Napa is still waiting for their FEMA reimbursement from the earthquake three years ago, so don't bank on it too soon. What is the Grant Street Myrdledale Road project? Some explanation on that?
Mike, would you mind speaking a little bit to that project?
So we've put in a claim for damage to the road due to the heavy equipment that utilized it, so the lowboys hauling the bulldozers, the heavy fire trucks going up and down that road, it, it got beat up pretty good. We met with FEMA inspectors last Thursday, came to an agreement on length, width, and thickness of the road. We'll see what happens. I can only ask, if I get it, we're lucky.
We have a PMI value for that road?
It's...
Before the fire and whatever it is now, should be the...
Right, I mean, it's, it's their determination if it's, if they're going to fund it, they'll fund it. We've told them what we think the valuation is for restitution. We've agreed on, you know, the parameters for which the claim could be filed or accepted under, and we're just waiting for confirmation for a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
So even if they deny the claim, we, this is work we're still going to have to do?
Correct.
Okay.
And we've programmed this in the five-year plan.
Saw that.
So if, if we're successful in this, then that will just extend, you know, another project that we can, we can stuff in that, that slot.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Gloria. Anyone else before we go on? Okay, Gloria? Your mic, please.
I turned it off there for a minute. Okay, so this is a recap of our sources and uses of general fund, our revenues, the adjustments of 307,710, so we're expecting the revised budget to be 10.9 million. Expenditures, 32,205 in revisions, not a whole lot, so 9.6 million. Our surplus is of 1.3 million revised. We've got some other sources, which is our Measure A and some Doish proceeds, 1.4 million. We've got capital projects, we've increased it by 55,165, and I'm just looking to see if I have the reason why, what projects we have there, but I don't have it on here, sorry. So 4.7 million in capital projects, and then transfers in and out. We've actually decreased some of that because originally, we had the Little League restroom, we're going to transfer in 250,000, but we really didn't need all of that, so we're putting it back into the cultural recreational fund, so that is part of the decrease of that and a couple of other projects that aren't going to, that we took off the list. So again, we anticipate our ending fund balance for 17-18 will be 5.8 million. Started out with 8.5, and anticipating 5.8 million. And then this again shows just what our reserves are expecting to be, a percentage of operating expenditures. We've actually now revised it 60.4% as opposed to 57.7 when we did our budget back in June. The next slide is our water fund. So our ending capital balance for the water fund and is 100, I'm sorry, 415,222 as opposed to 131 when we first started out, and that was because we ended up with the larger ending balance at June 30th, 2017. Not very much here that we're doing, other than we're asking for approval for adjustments 37,500, which is for some contract services that the Public Works Department requested. CIP, again, we've reduced some of our capital projects, and so we anticipate our ending balance to be 954,159, not a whole lot of difference from when we first brought to council back in 20, June.
Can you pause for one second? Can we, back to slide 10, water fund resources, or sources and uses? So there was a revision of incremental 321 in working capital. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
That, that is correct, because our beginning working capital at June 30th, 2017 was more than we had projected when I first started with this budget.
Okay, and is, and that's as a result of projects not being completed, or...
There was a couple of things, though. Our revenues came a little bit more than we had anticipated, about 50,000 more, and our expenditures were less than what we had anticipated. And this is for the operations, and I, part of the thing was also our pension expense was less, only because when we made that 1.8 million, everything went to the general fund as opposed to being allocated to our enterprise funds and general fund. We ended up allocating it to general fund, so those were some savings that we had in the pension expense.
Because the general fund covered it, not because funds left enterprise into general fund?
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so that was part of the reason why we ended up with a larger fund balance than we anticipated.
City Manager Feek, which fund balance was used in calculating the new one, I know it's coming up on the next agenda item, on the water and wastewater rate study? Was it, did it include this incremental or this incremental 320 grant?
I believe for this, for this year, the audited financials, which includes that 320, were not available for the rate study, so I believe the number that we would have used would have been the budget number, so the original number that Gloria presented here.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Gloria, go ahead.
That's okay. All right, and I think we touched on the capital fund, and again, there was a couple of projects that we've taken off the list, and that's the automatic reader program, the River Lee pathway water line relocation, the Kimball Instream Flow Study, and we do have an increase of 101,000 for the water line that was approved at the last city council meeting for, along Myrdle Street. On the wastewater fund, the only reduction is in expenditures, $20,000 less than we had anticipated. We reduced some of our contract services. This one again, our fund balance, our beginning working capital was more at June 30th, 2017 than we had anticipated, so that's why our fund balance is now 500, expecting 597,000 as opposed to 155,000. And then for our wastewater capital fund, we're recommending a reduction of 305,000 for some capital projects that were to be funded by one-time connection fees, and this includes the sewer systems assessment project, influen-infiltration project, and the biggest one was 200,000 to the grit removal aeration basin project. And this one, not a whole lot of difference in our beginning working capital, but we do anticipate our ending working capital will be 724,750, and that's just because of the reduction of the projects. Equipment replacement fund, not really a whole lot of revisions, other than $1,000 to expenditures, and this one again, we're anticipating to end at 713,441. Our special revenue funds, which are for specific purposes, and we're anticipating a little bit over 4.1 million in our fund balance. And this just pretty much recaps all the funds, and where we anticipate to finish at June 30th, 2018. And again, you know, the Tubbs fire, the impacts, none of those have been included in here, just because we don't anticipate to receive any of those revenues in this fiscal So that concludes my report. Thank you, Gloria.
Thank you. Anyone in the public with any questions? Please. You have to be at the podium, and you have to introduce yourself because we have a vast home audience.
Just a comment, it's not a real question, but my name's Dennis Lang, over here on Cedar Street. For the public's perspective here, it sure would be great if we had a laser pen that would allow, when she's speaking to things, I mean, you're rushing through stuff pretty quickly, and I'm really working to find it, and I'm finding many of them, but that's because I had some of the documents in my hand, and I know that when some people up here with laser pens, it's really been a lot easier for us to follow what's going on. Comment only.
Thank you very much. That is a very fair point of feedback. Thank you. Kathy, we're on that. Is there one there? Just don't shoot Kathy with it. Anyone else? Yes, please. Share with us your name and address, should you so choose.
Sophie Galong, 1611 Harley Street. My question is, I'm just curious, what is the fees of the current water consultants, Bardo Wells Associates for this year and previous year?
We paid them, the total fee for Bardo Wells was about $46,000, and I don't remember, there's an amount above that, but 46,000 approximately to do the full wastewater, wastewater utility rate study. That also included doing a water and wastewater connection fee.
So that was for the whole studies, 2017 and 2018?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, close the public comment, bring it back to council for any further questions.
I have just a comment. On the last page, when you go down to the third last line, total net change for fiscal 17-18, it appears that we are spending down a good amount of our reserves doing things for the community, because each one of those columns has a net, a net number in it, which means it came off of something. So we're doing things, sewer, water, equipment, services, et cetera. Is that the, kind of in a nutshell, a way to look at it?
For the general fund, yes, you know, there's a lot of it put in street maintenance, I think 2.7 million, the water capital, and in the wastewater capital, yes. But for water operations and wastewater operations, no, we're just not... We're just not, we don't have enough revenues for our, to cover our expenditures.
But where we do have the revenues, we are spending them down for the improvement of roads, all the non-sexy stuff, all the stuff on the ground that you don't see.
Roads, pensions, all that fun stuff.
Thank you.
If I might add, there's some nice things in there though, too. We are doing work on sidewalks, we are doing improvements at the pool, there is other miscellaneous park improvements. We spent $30,000 recently on new shade structures at Pioneer Park. So sometimes people don't see it, but there is a significant amount of money. And Jim, you're absolutely correct. If you look at the capital projects expenses, $4.6 million, on any given year, we spend, you know, if you look at past audits, anywhere between, you know, somewhere less than a million during some of the rough times to up to $2 million. This year was a significant year where we put a lot of money towards roads and other capital projects.
Thank you very much. Any action needed on this Gloria, or just, yeah, you do have a resolution? Okay. Council members, anyone willing to entertain that motion as presented?
I'll make a motion, we adopt the resolution approving the operating and capital improvement budget adjustments for fiscal year 2017, 18.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, we have a second by Vice Mayor Dunstford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you Gloria. Item number 12, consideration, consideration of the introduction of the updated ordinance is related to proposed water and wastewater rates from the 2017 water and wastewater utility rate study. Recommended action, introduce the ordinance and waive the first reading. City Manager Feek, are you taking us through this?
Yes, I am, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just very, very briefly, councilors, I mentioned at our last meeting, I was, my goal was to bring the ordinance to you for your consideration for the first reading, to introduce the ordinance via the first reading tonight. So what you have before you is just that, based on the feedback we've received, based on public discussions we've had, even holding one mayor's forum, a lot of discussion on water wastewater rates. So I won't lengthen the amount of time that I'm talking here tonight. The one thing I would add in is the final reports that you see do include increasing the low income assistance program from 15,000 to $30,000. And what you have is two separate ordinances, one to amend the ordinance related to the water rates, and then a second ordinance to amend the ordinance related to wastewater rates. I would point out, and this was my fault for, this was part of putting an agenda, a staff report item together while I was out of state. In the, in the staff report on line 26, it says, "Staff is providing draft ordinances for council review and adoption. These new rates will take effect March 1st, 2018." The way it will actually work from this point is tonight, you're reviewing the ordinances. If you waive the first reading, it will come back likely on the consent calendar, unless you prefer otherwise, at our next meeting. And similar with other ordinances, new ordinances will take effect 30 days after they're adopted. Which essentially would put these new rates in effect as of April 6th, which is 30 days following the next council meeting. What I would actually recommend, it gives people more time, and also from just a billing perspective, for ease of staff and being able to manage the way we do billing, what I would actually recommend is we change the effective date of the new rates to May 1st, 2018. What that essentially does is all the utility bills after that last day in April, so starting May 1, moving forward, would reflect the new water and wastewater rates. That would significantly ease the billing process from Gloria's office's perspective. It also gives us more than adequate time to continue to notice people, let them know exactly when they receive this bill, you'll see the new rates, so on and so forth. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And what's before you tonight is the ordinances, and then they'll come up again at the next meeting.
So Don, do you mean then that the first reading of the meters would be May 1st? And then the subsequent billing from that reading, would we do July 1st?
No, no, the actual reading would take place the end of June. And then the billing would actually take place in July. So, you know, the way we currently do it is when we look at a period, it's, well, for, excuse me, for residential customers. It's a two-month billing.
Right.
And so at the end of the second month is when we do the reading. And then it's actually the following month when they receive the bill and they have to pay the bill.
So we would do the first reading on May 1st?
In June.
So just to clarify, so we would go out and read the meters April 25th, and then we go back out June 25th. So that your billing would go from April 25th to June 25th. So on July 1st, when you get that bill, and that's the period that it's covering.
But that's only one month. You read them for two months.
April 25th to June 25th. That's two months.
April to June, okay.
Gloria, can you please clarify, April, we spoke about this earlier, April 25th, when they're reading the bill, that will, that will feed, when they're reading the meter, that will feed the bill, which will be the current rates as of today, not the new rates, correct?
Right. So they go out and read the meters April 25th, and it goes on your, that's the bill that you get on May for the two subsequent, two prior months.
Two previous months, so that's the old rate.
That's the old rate.
Correct. So when you go out again, two months later to read them?
It's the new rates.
June, that bill that comes out will have the new rates on.
So you wouldn't want to say May 1st, you'd want to say April 25th. The ordinance actually only speaks of, the ordinance only...
Your light doesn't work?
No, no, I'm just, I don't want to stutter on the, on the mic. The ordinance doesn't actually speak to the dates that we do the billing. The ordinance is, it only matters about when it becomes effective. So we would want, the rates would become effective 30 days after they're approved by city council. So doesn't it make more sense to have the rate change when they're going to look at the meter? Whether it's beyond 30 days or not, if it's 35 days, you want it to time up when they're reading the meter, which would be effective whether it's April 25th, it seems like it would be...
Do we always read the meter on the 25th of the month?
Yeah.
All right, just make it 25th of the month then.
Unless you change it, they have them read the meter on the 1st.
Dr. Kern, clarify.
So we typically read the meters the third week of the month. So typically around the 17th, 18th, 19th, that's when we run around and read all the meters, both for commercial and residential. Do commercial monthly, we do residential every other month. So the meter reading in April is going, would reflect the prior two months of usage. Meter reading in June will reflect the usage from that April 15th basically, or 17th, to June 17th. So the effective date is whatever it is. I think the caveat or the nuance would be that for residential billing purposes, the new rates would be effective with the June bill.
On the June bill.
The June bill.
Make it effective, rate effective May 1st, you've got six days in there of old rates and...
Right. So if you make it effective March 6th, with the caveat that for residential, the new rates will not be reflected until the June billing cycle of 2017. It solves both nuance, it solves both problems and gives Gloria and my staff the ability not to have to go through a six-day correction action.
Okay. As long as we don't have that six-day thing.
Yeah, whatever the solution is.
They just can't take effect prior to, the increase in rates can't take effect prior to, you can postpone the rate any time after that. All right. Now that that's settled, council members, any other questions?
I have a question or kind of a statement, I guess. Just, and for transparency purposes, I met for a couple of hours last night with Antoinette Mallard, and she went over some thoughts she had for the rate increase that we have here. And a number of the things that she explained to me made a great deal of sense. I think that she's put quite a bit of effort into looking into the issue. It may come up too late for us to make any changes in this. However, I think she's going to speak tonight about some of her, she's not going to. It is very complicated. And like I say, it took a couple of hours to kind of go through it. So if the council would consider having Jim and myself as the ad hoc committee, and Dylan and Mike Kern get together with Antoinette, and listen to what she has to say about her thoughts about the fixed rate and how all that works on out, so that she has either a better feeling, or maybe not, about how we're proceeding on this. So I think that there's some frustration on the part of a number of people in town that feel that their voice on this hasn't been heard. They get three minutes to speak to the council, and it's difficult without charts, graphs, and everything for them to counterpoint what it is that has been said. So as we move forward on this, if we can convene that group again and just listen to what she has to say, and perhaps there's, it's too late for the input, I don't know, but I think that that might go a long way towards resolving things in people's minds.
So it's certainly not too late for the input because the council hasn't taken action on the ordinance, so.
I have no problem with meeting.
All right. Any other council members before I open this to the public? All right. I do have three speaker cards. First is Mr. Knoblick. Please share with us your name and address should you so choose, and keep your comments to three minutes.
Good evening. Paul Knoblick, 1019 Cedar Street, mayor and council members. Although it is true that within five years, my water wastewater bill for the year will equal the total of my current property taxes, I am willing to pay that or even more, because I understand that we simply must address our water sewer and related infrastructure issues. What I'm not willing to do is to be silently complicit enforcing Calistogans whose water usage, and thus their wastewater usage, is low, to pay a rate that is potentially many times higher per unit than those of us who use a lot of water, like myself. This is simply wrong. It runs counter to common sense and counter to the clear mandate that public utility rates be fair and equitable. Fair and equitable rates is what a public utility is supposed to achieve, whether that public utility be PG&E, AT&amp;T, or the Calistoga City Council. A delay is not really ideal, and certainly not what I would have even hoped for. But it was necessary on two occasions in 2010, when two delays resulted in important benefits. The first was the elimination of the 25% discount for Tier 1 and 10% discount for Tier 2 water rates. Can you imagine if that had not been achieved eight years ago, that instead of the rates going up 15%, they'd go up 40% the first year? The second benefit from having those two delays was that when the water and wastewater revenue advisory committee made its final report to the city council, and the city council was taking action on it, there were a lot of people in the room who spoke and said they did not want these higher rates. But many of those same people praised the work of the committee because they had sought all the input that they could, they came up with some changes, and they said it was fair. So a delay of even one billing cycle, this go-around will yield, I believe, tangible results if the council will entertain specific proposed solutions from the public at its next meeting. And if you would allow me to be a part of this group, I promise I won't one for election this cycle, so there's no exposure for me, okay? The right thing to do is to take the additional time needed to develop a more considered rate structure, instead of giving in to the pressure to raise rates this billing cycle. And since February is designated Black History Month, I'll conclude my remarks with Martin Luther King's assertion that "the time is always right to do the right thing." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knoblick. Next, I have Antoinette Myard. Please share your name and address should you so choose.
Antoinette Myard, Lily Street, Calistoga. Good evening, and thank you Gary. When old ways are no longer working, or in a different era, or recognized as inherently wrong, the core question, the question that allows for progress, is could there be another way, a better way? Willingness to look beyond the safety of how it's always been done, and take that scary leap of allowing for the possibility of something new, is one of the defining hallmarks, not only of leadership, but of human progress. Questioning accepted wisdom on power generation gave us solar panels. A small group viewed as mentally disturbed at the time, suggested that universal suffrage might actually include women. Little of value in human history has occurred without such openness, without the drive to ask whether perhaps there might be a better alternative. We all know that this water and wastewater pricing plan is unjust. The mayor's acknowledgement at the last council meeting is available on video. I suggest that we're capable of doing better, that fairness and fiscal stability do not have to be mutually exclusive. So many questions remain. During drought, how much water do we actually use? If the cumulative fixed billing is 32%, why are fixed fees 50, 60, and 70% for every residential customer I've encountered? And who's paying their wastewater, who's not paying their wastewater usage? Can we devise a pricing model that doesn't subsidize large users by punishing small ones? The people of Calistoga deserve this inquiry. And it requires only two things. First is the courage to let go of how it's always been done, so that we can at least consider fresh alternatives. Second, needs a little time. And for this, I respectfully request that the council accept Gary's suggestion that we delay this vote, and to invite realistic and sincere approaches for their consideration, for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Just to clarify, I stated they were unfair, not unjust. Next up, I have Sophie Galong.
Sophie Galong, still living on Harley Street? Can you hear me now?
There you go.
Ahah. So Sophie Galong, still living on Harley Street. Dear mayor, dear council members, Calistogans have been told again and again that a single-tier pricing model is our only available option in light of the law and a recent court decision. We recently learned that a multi-tier pricing system is actually still a legal and viable option, to the extent this is justifiable. Calistoga having two different water sources, namely the Kimball Reservoir and the North Bay Aqueduct, it would most likely justify... Bay Aqueduct, it would most likely justify having a double-tier water pricing system. I repeat, Calistoga having two different water sources, it would most likely justify having a double-tier water pricing system. While this would not be the fix-it-all solution, it has the potential to at least soften the regressive pricing now under consideration. I would like to hear why this was not considered by our City Council and if it was, I would like to know why this was not shared with the public. Council members have spoken vigorously and correctly about their fiduciary duty to assure solid financial footing for Calistoga's water enterprise. I would like to remind them that they also have a fiduciary duty to Calistoga residents in assuring a fair and equitable path to achieving that fiscal stability. At the last council meeting, our mayor acknowledged that the pricing model under consideration is not fair, unfair. It is hard to imagine how an incredibly unfair proposal has been selected as the best possible solution. Moving forward with a plan that forces households that do their best to conserve water and small households, including widows and retirees, to subsidize extravagant water users and large households, is it really the best we can do? I personally hold a higher opinion of our community. I do believe we can do better. Thank you for your time and for your attention.
Thank you. I don't have any more speaker cards, but is anyone interested in addressing the council on this matter? Thank you. Should you so choose, you know the drill.
Thank you, Donald Williams on Cedar View Road. It's not too late. There is still time for the council to postpone its vote on the water and wastewater proposal and to reconsider with the intellectual rigor they deserve the feedback and the ideas that we have heard over the past two months. Proceeding with this proposal would show that the council believes that of all the ideas brought forward by the public, only one, the low-income threshold, was worthy of serious consideration, only one. That challenges logic and credibility. Good policy requires openness to fresh perspectives. Good policy requires thoughtful consideration of the will and the well-being of the public. It requires responsiveness to the almost 500 letters from fellow Calistogans. Good policy requires at the very least an attempt at equity and fairness and as so many have pointed out, the plan under consideration tonight falls short of these levels. It is not too late. There is still time to assemble a committee of citizens to help frame the questions that need to be asked and then to look for viable, fiscally responsible solutions that are both fair and practical, solutions which are not divisive because of income but instead compensate every ratepayer for the increase with more than just a vague mention of possible rebate maybe someday. I respectfully ask the council to take a step back and give the ideas we have heard and those we may not have yet heard the consideration that they deserve. A little delay will not be as detrimental as a bad choice. It's still not too late. Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Benny. I live on Fisher, Calistoga, and I didn't come with anything prepared, but I would just like to throw my voice in there and say I'm against the upgrade or whatever we're going to charge the tier. Anyway, I don't want it. And pay Harley.
You didn't see Harley on the next five years, did you? I didn't -- I saw you in the audience, I didn't want to break your heart.
My husband would be angry if I hadn't told him.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, I'll close public comment and bring it back to the council, but a few clarifications. We've got Mike in the room and we have Dylan and we have two of the members from the ad hoc committee. I know this was addressed during the public meetings and public hearings on this, but if you can give us a little more light as to the complications in trying to have two different tiers for two different types of water coming to us, one being from Kimball and one being from NBA, and then the complications that blending creates. So either yourself or Mike.
Yeah, I'll take this one and if anyone wants to chime in and add, we can. That was one of the first things we looked at is can we charge different tiers? Because the law does say, and as we've said all along, the law says unless you can justify it, then you can't do it. So that was the first question that we asked when we met during the summer was can we justify it? Can we look at additional costs? We looked at everything from the cost to treat and produce our own water here at Kimball, which is cheaper than buying water and paying to have it treated as well as moved up the NBA water line here to Calistoga. It gets blended in, it gets mixed in. It's not like there's a single meter where we can say this gallon of water is from here, that gallon of water is from there. And actually, we have three sources of water. We also have recycled water. So one of the conversations we had was should we begin charging for recycled water? That was another discussion that the ad hoc committee had. The challenge we have with charging there is even if we do start disincentivizing use of that recycled water, it gets us into trouble with our cease and desist order where if we're now discharging into the Napa River illegally beyond our discharge limits, then we could get in trouble and see fines. So at this point in time, we made the decision not to do that. So there was considerable thought there. If someone feels like it wasn't, like you're unaware of that, if you'd like more information on it, we'd be happy to provide it, but the simple matter is, City of Calistoga, we cannot justify the additional, the difference in tiered costs the way we currently do it. And that was a question asked very early on during the rate study.
So the tiering question, the state of California answered for all of us, whether we like it or not, and that's what my specific comment about the unfairness of this related to is we can't tier, so we can't charge high users more. Relative to trying to tier based on the two sources of our water, direct to Kern, there is, you don't shut one off on one particular -- well, if you shut one off on one particular day and that costs you more than you turn the other one on, we don't have a separate means by which to tell 1810 West Myrtle Street where that gallon of water came from, correct?
That's correct. The color of our water is clear, so it's hard to distinguish NBA water from Kimball water.
And we don't shut off Kimball to run in NBA because at some point, give us some clarification how it -- they're not two separate systems. They're two separate sources, but...
There's one distribution system. Everything gets commingled in our two storage tanks or what gets diverted directly to the user closest to the pipe. There are times when the NBA goes offline and we have to rely on Kimball and/or storage and vice versa. Sometimes Kimball goes offline, we have to rely 100% on NBA and storage. So it's kind of a back and forth. We are a small organization operationally. We don't have the luxury of saying that these three or four individuals are dedicated to water treatment only at Kimball and we can cost source, you know, that cost. All of our operators are multitasking and flexible. They have to be able to report to either Kimball or Dunwoy or anywhere in between. So to try and compartmentalize the different operations becomes extremely difficult.
And you would in effect have a different rate on any given day of the year. Sometimes it's more NBA water than Kimball and vice versa, so you would have to say on July 1st, this is where your water came from and that's not something we're capable of doing.
Correct.
Okay.
Mike, how much of a cost difference is there between the water approximately that we produce and the water we get from down the alley?
I don't know.
Well, as I recall, and we've got a couple of people here that were on the committee a number of years ago, as I recall, the cost difference between the two of them at the time, they flip-flopped between which was more expensive and which was less expensive, but that goes back before you were here and before these large rate increases from Napa.
Right. I mean, Napa's rate has all of the utilities built into it where Kimball, you know, we're at the mercy of PG&E, what time of op -- now that everything's gone to time of use, so if we're making water during the day, we're paying the highest premium for electricity. None of that was in play seven years ago when you guys went through that analysis.
So did you, the you two that were on this time around, you looked at the different costs of processing inbound, sorry, finished product from Napa versus what it costs us or that was not available to this group?
I don't think it's something that we could come up with because there, like Mike said, there are so many variables. What time of day do you make the water? PG&E charges you one rate for evening, one rate for daytime. We are at the mercy of that. We're at the mercy of the NBA charging for the water. They just hit us with a pretty big increase. We have to pay it. It's where we get our water. We don't pay it, we lose 55, 60% of our water.
So the product we're getting through the NBA is a finished product that we're paying for versus what we're making here and the cost involved?
And then you blend the two and you just, there is no way to say that this ball has these definitive parts in it because it changes momentarily. There is no way that we could see, is there, Mike? I think Gary will agree with those discussions we had.
Yeah, I'm not sure how he would break it down. I just...
Yeah, it would be, it would be an accounting nightmare. We would have to, like I said, compartmentalize specific individuals. You're solely up, you're solely working here and capture all of those cost centers on an annual basis, determine how much water is produced and what the per-unit cost is. And you would have to do that for multiple years before you could really get a feel for what that actual cost is. And there are some costs that have been absorbed in Kimball that would have to be rolled backwards into what those, what that total, what that operational cost is, defense of the water rights. Who owns that? Is that Kimball? I would argue that it would have to be because it's not part of the Napa water. So you have all of those variables that would be in play that would need to be basically allocated to Kimball operations and then how much water was produced, what was the unit cost. And then depending on, you know, the variation in water availability in either facility, if Kimball is empty, what's the cost of that water? It's zero because there is none. So how do you correlate those on an ongoing basis?
And to, thank you, and even if we were able to differentiate the two, we still couldn't penalize a high water user because the water that they're using, whether it be the 1,000 gallons versus me using 100 gallons, still blended comes from two different sources. So there's no mechanism, compliments of the state of California, the court, for us to penalize someone or encourage someone to use less by charging them more. So even if we had a fixed rate for what each of those came into as they go into being blended, there's no way to say that your 101st gallon of water cost us more than your 100th gallon of water is my understanding from the consultants, who again, wasn't just the smart people here you see that were participating in that. We have had a consultant that this is all they do every single day of the week, all the time.
To knock it down to really simple terms, you are currently paying 8 tenths of a mil per gallon. That's for everything, sewer, water, in, out. These increases will increase that to 9 tenths of a mil per gallon, all in sewer, water, everything. That's the difference when you take all the water, all the different places, put it together, use it, irrigate, drink, wash your dishes, flush your toilet, and flush it. 1/10 of 1 mil per gallon is the rate increase.
Regarding the fixed rate issue, which I understand, I appreciate people's concerns, the fixed number is what it costs you to be connected to the system. So the less water you use, yes, your percentage of the bill that's fixed is always going to be higher. The more water you use, the less the percentage of your fixed, of your bill will be, but your overall bill is certainly going to be higher because you're using more water. An analogy would be you, you know, I lease a car, my car payment's $500 a month. I park that car in my driveway. Regardless of how many miles I do or don't drive that car, it still costs me $500 a month. When I drive the car, then there are additional costs in gasoline, but you don't break it out. That $500 doesn't get spread out over anything else. So it's the, you know, unfortunately, it's the cost of having access to the systems in terms of that. In a moment. Regarding, Mr. Williams, I appreciate your comment, but the assumption in your comment is that we haven't listened to anyone over the last two weeks or the last month. We may not have acted upon everyone's wishes or desires, but that certainly doesn't mean we've been dismissive of what's been presented to us. So appreciate that and I do appreciate your comments there. Antoinette Myard, briefly, please.
The logic or the analogy of the car sitting in the driveway isn't actually a particularly good one because it makes the assumption that the amount of water in bears absolutely zero relationship to the amount of water out. And that simply isn't logical.
I was referencing that to what the base, your concern on the base is the higher percentage of your bill.
I'm talking about the wastewater fees. If wastewater fees are fixed, why not just arbitrarily make incoming water fees fixed? It's just as logical because the amount of water that you take in has a direct parity. It's not a one-on-one parity, but it has a direct parity, direct relationship to the amount of water you put into the wastewater system. And the amount that you should absorb, I should absorb of my share of what it costs to maintain, improve, and run the wastewater system. If there were zero relationship between water in and water out and wastewater out, then your analogy would make perfect sense, but there is a relationship.
But we can't meter it.
Yeah, we can't...
We can't prove that relationship. There's no way to meter what goes out.
No, but I think that you, there is a way to look at what you, the city, I'm sure, Dylan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm assuming that the city knows how much residential wastewater goes into the system. It also knows how much waste, how much pure water comes into people's residential, for residential use. There's a relationship there and it's, it may be 90%, it may be 85%, it may be 99%. I don't know what that number is, but there's a clear and probably relatively consistent relationship between water in and water out.
Dylan, if we looked at, there was, the metering of the outflow is the challenge.
Correct.
And why don't we use an equation for inbound versus outbound?
Residential meters, it's a flat fee because we're using an estimate. And so the estimate is that residential customers, we look at how much wastewater comes through the entire system that we are attributing to users. So again, let me preface this by saying we get a significant amount of infiltration and flow during rain events. It's water that we have to treat at the sewer plant that does not ever get billed, but still has, is rainwater that gets in the system, has to be treated, has to be cleaned before it gets put back into the environment. So when they look through and you can see all this information in your tables on the back of the wastewater rate study, they look at all the different amounts that are contributed based on user class. So residential customers have a total amount and they're looking at that based on this total amount and this many residential customers and that's what we recommend, the fixed fee amount B. They're also looking at those residential user classes and identifying differences between them like we discussed at the last council meeting. Single-family residential, multifamily residential, mobile home residential, and we're assigning different percentages... different percentages, if you will. You know, we're making an assumption that mobile home owners, mobile home users contribute less to the wastewater system than a single-family residential customer, so.
And and is that based on how much water intake each mobile home is is receiving or is that just a guess for, out of the blue? In other words, why would you assume that a mobile home would take in less water than a, a house on Cedar Street?
It's a, it's a standard that Bartle Wells and Associates recommends we use-
Okay, but you don't know that.
Based on other rate studies. No, we don't. No, no, we don't.
Well, I'm suggesting that that data is available. And I'm suggesting that if there is no doubt, that if there's a way for you to say how much residential outflow goes in into the wastewater system.
There, there absolutely is a way and that's to put a wastewater meter on the residential home, period.
No, I mean, I mean, I don't mean individual homes, I mean cumulatively.
There is not.
There is not, okay.
Period. The only, the only way to do it would be to put it on, on the meter at the, as it comes out of the home into the system. That's the only place you could put it. And and the other thing I just point out is that we, we also have to recognize that a single-family homeowner with one person living there is different than a single-family homeowner to adults and six kids. So, there are even discrepancies amongst just a single-family user type.
Absolutely.
Same thing with with commercial. That's why you'll see when we do commercial billing, most of your commercial customers, if not all, have installed their own meters. They want to be billed for exactly what they're contributing into the wastewater system. From a business operation perspective, it makes more sense that they install their meter. But for residential, we don't do that. It's just too cost prohibitive. But if a residential customer wanted to do it that way, I don't, our billing process wouldn't work that way, but the, the flat fee is how it's done.
Okay.
It is, it's the way it is, it's the way it's always been done. That was, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that there are no other alternatives. A nuanced set of alternative possibilities is not something that can be handled in a back-and-forth banter in, in, in five minutes, but, but I, I am convinced that there are other possibilities that are worth looking at.
Thank you. Anyone else in the council?
Well, I just might add that in that argument for one further point, there's no way then to account for water use for irrigation. Mr. Novak before said he used a lot of water and I'm assume, and I'm assuming it was for irrigation because you have, I've been to your house, so it looks like about a 2,500 square foot house, maybe 27, I don't know, you and your wife. So, if you're using a lot of water, that's irrigation. That's your choice, but there's no way to measure it, given the parameters that you were talking about, Antoinette.
So, let's-
Yes.
Understood.
But I mean, it was just a point.
So, Sophie, go ahead because I gave Antoinette, but you have one, one minute.
I did. I had a meter on it.
I am grateful that you are open to comments and to consider new elements. This double-tier pricing, I have been attending three, that's my third council meeting, I had never heard that before from either of you that it was considered, nor that it was even legal or viable option. So, I would be grateful you would be able to share more information about that and look into that. It is not easy. It is complicated. I get it. When I go to Car-Mart and I pay my bill at the cashier, I'm going to pay a certain price. My budgets, I have different sources of revenues. I can't tell if my chicken is 50% from that revenue or 30% from that revenue. I would have to make some assumptions, but I know I have several sources of revenues. Same here, we have two sources of water, so, thank you.
Thank you. All right, council, suggestions, questions?
Gary and Antoinette, you said you had a couple of hours of meeting when various scenarios were discussed.
And a lot of the things that were discussed here were also discussed last night. And I, I guess the question I have for, for Dylan is, is, I guess it's a two-part question. Number one, if we do the reading of the first ordinance, the first reading of the ordinance tonight, do we have to do the second reading within a certain number of days after the first reading? In other words, could we delay the second reading by another council meeting and still meet our legal obligations when it comes to adopting the ordinance and also still make the date that we discussed about implementing the, the rate increase? Do you get where I'm coming from?
Just, just two comments. One, if, I think one, one meeting date would give us enough time under our current schedule to make, to, to give you enough time so you could, you could essentially hold the, you know, not have the meeting to consider the second reading on the sixth, hold it on the 20th. 30 days after that is April 20th. It still gives us time to make the ordinance in effect by the time we do billing for that paid period following April 20th. But the second item that I just cautioned is, I'm not quite sure what the context of the discussions will be and what's to come of it. If it's going to be anything, anything of substantial changes to the rates proposed, which would alter the ordinance that's been brought forth, then that would, you know, the, the city attorney would recommend we bring the ordinance back to city council for, again, another reading and introduction of something that's changed. So, that, that could certainly be a case if we're changing the ordinances significantly different than what's presented here tonight.
Here's the recommendation that I'd like the council to consider. If I read, if I read your or understood your presentation correctly, Gloria, there were some carryover revenues from seven, 16, 17 that we had not anticipated. So, there were actually some funds in the enterprise fund that were not anticipated and could not be taken into consideration by the ad hoc committee because you could only go off of budget while you're, we're building this process, these were accruing. Understanding and appreciating that there are some other ideas that could be vetted out there, but also hopefully appreciating that this cannot be another situation of 21 meetings to discuss water and wastewater rates moving forward. I'm willing to propose that we push this item, so not even do the first reading because I think that creates further complications.
Okay.
That we push this item, allow for a scheduled, we'll call it a community forum, but it's with the ad hoc committee and city staff at a fixed date and time, however much-
Seems possible.
How much every time you think it needs.
Well, then it, it is a brown act event.
No, there's only two of you.
Oh, you will be there, okay.
It's the ad hoc, I will not be there.
All right.
It is an ad hoc committee. They're called community, community forums, but fix, set time to hash these out. I would suggest, if possible, not if possible, we pay them, have a representative from Bartles and Wells there because this is their bailiwick, this is their expertise, and they may have heard some of these ideas in other communities. And at that point, whatever surfaces from that discussion, the ad hoc committee brings it back to us on the same agenda as these rates unless, sorry, brings it back to us and says there is an adjustment to be considered or not.
Well, I would have maybe a different thought on that, which is not delaying our action. And if something fruitful comes about from these meetings, then we could contemplate a rebate on the earlier side, you know, get the rates approved, get this moving forward so that city staff can move forward with all the refinancing and all that. And then your point about the, the budget issue, I think, is a valid point. There's some, if that changes something, then perhaps we can issue a rebate on the front end to somehow make up for that surplus or something like that. But I haven't heard one idea out of all of these meetings that has been significant. Otherwise, it would have been, I think, the council would have incorporated those ideas into this proposal, this proposal. I have not heard one sub, idea of substance that would make a substantial difference. And I just don't want to see us continue to move, you know, delay this.
I, I would suggest, well, and my recommendation is we wait one meeting period, which is two weeks, and if you, sorry, the two ad hoc committee and those interested think that two weeks is doable to have this dialogue and look at this math. What it, what it cannot be, and I agree this part on my, it can't be a continuation of a continuation of people postponing what they don't want to happen anyway, which is a rate increase, but I'm open, if the two ad hoc members are open, to having that further discussion.
I would more tend to agree with Michael. Get it on the books. This has been going on now for 15, 16 months. We've had meetings after meetings after meetings, we've had forums after forums. We get the rates on the books. We'll have this ad hoc community meeting. We will take into consideration anything new that is brought up to light, but like Michael said, I have heard nothing either of a substance, substantive issue that would change my mind. I'm open to listen and I would, I would welcome sitting down with you for a couple hours, Antoinette. Maybe you've got something that I never even thought of. I hope you do. I really do. But I want to move this forward. If we find something, we can always change a water rate schedule by council vote, can we not? I mean, if we find something six months from now that says, holy smokes, we can, we can knock 10% off that rate doing X, Y, Z. We come up here, we figure we're going to do it, we pass a resolution, and we do it. Is that correct? You can change your rate at any time.
That could happen, that could happen even the next time at the second reading.
Yes, it could.
You might come back with some information that is significant-
It could.
Because none of us up here want to increase our water and sewer rates.
No. But I, like you, I want to get this thing moving. I want to, I agree with you. Keep it going forward and at the same time, keep the dialogue open.
All right, so.
I, I tend to go along with Chris on this particular one.
That's why we're up here.
Yeah, that's why we're up here. Based on a little bit of what, a lot on what Dylan just said, that if we do come up with something, if there is a possibility that we come up with something and we do the first reading tonight, we have to begin over again on the, on the ordinance.
Right.
That's going to have to happen anyways. If, if we delay this and you go-
... the water system, so, I mean, I, I will, I will agree with Mr. Dunsford that we should move forward and then if we come with a solution, we always then readjust it later.
City Mayor Feek, what complications does a delay create for you? Or answer it any way you wish.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments that I'd make that are just, Jermaine, one, you know, as we started this process, you know, the one thing I'd remind council is that we didn't have any rate changes starting January 1. So, one thing just to be advised of is, the rate study also assumed that we would implement new rates by January 1. So, the further out into this fiscal year we get, there's an impact on when we start projects, when we start collecting revenue to fund those projects, so on and so forth. From just a challenge perspective, you know, I guess one question I might ask is, is there any reason why we couldn't entertain a conversation here? I'm not sure what this information is. I mean, I've spoken with Antoinette, she came to visit me in my office, you know, shared certain thoughts with me several weeks ago, shared emails, information. You know, this is a meeting, a public meeting where they all, where she has the ear of the full council. Is there a reason why you couldn't make up, you know, what are your thoughts, comments here tonight that the full council could weigh in? I don't know. You know, from my experience over these last several months, you know, it seems that there's, just continues to be, really, there's the two, two concerns. One is what's appropriate for the fixed amount versus the variable amount? I think we've provided all the information. I'm, you know, I won't comment on that anymore, but there's the, a, a proposal that we've been considering to increase the amount in fixed revenue. That's what's before you. I think the second item is just this significant distaste that some users are going to be getting a discount on their water. And one thing I did look at, and if you were to look at the water tables in the report, single, this is single-family residential, because again, remind you that non-residential water customers, let me just, if you go to chart one in the appendix, this is page 28 of this, of the staff report, so it's, it's going to be chart one, single-family residential. It basically shows on the left side, percentage of total bills, on the, on the bottom, the 100 cubic feet billed. And as you go further out, the number of, the percentage of total residential bills we get for the, I'll call them the high-volume users, is very insignificant. The total number of users who use a lot of water is, it's not a significant amount. If you go forward more to table five, which would be page 35 of the report, you see several boxes. The second box actually breaks out the revenue generated. This is the volumetric revenue that we generated for the different tiers. Tiers two, three, and four for residential equate to $73,000 of our volumetric-based revenue. That's about 12% of the total charges we collect from the volumetric charges currently. So, I don't, I just, it's, I keep hearing it like there's just this inequity, this unfairness. I disagree with that characterization. Unfortunately, when state appellate courts rule, we have to follow. We don't have a choice. If we can justify it, we will. We can't. And the amount of revenue that's been charged to those higher tiers for the last several years is about 12% of the total cost charged in the, in the volumetric charges. Much greater impact could be associated to the capital improvement projects that we need to do. We have Dwyer Road Lift Pump Station. We have significant deterioration in old water pipes. If you remember the very first slide, in five years' time, 50% of our water infrastructure in town will be 50 years old or older. So, I think there's a much greater need on the capital side that needs to be funded, which historically we have not been able to fund. So, I'll leave it at that. I think if council, if you, if you want to pursue, if you, you know, you tell us from a policy perspective, if we need to have meetings with, with groups, with council, however we need to do it, we're here to support you. It's a hard decision. I agree with Michael's comment earlier, no one wants to raise rates. So, I, you know, whatever direction you have for us tonight, you know, we're, we're willing to, and we'll get whatever information we need to get. And that includes Bartle Wells, too. They've been very great at providing information to us very timely, whatever it is we ask of them.
All right. Thank you. All right, council members, I'll entertain. I, I made a suggestion. Others have, so at this point, Gary, something you're leaning toward the mic?
I'm trying to decide how to, to word this. I would like to make a motion that we delay the first reading of this ordinance until the next city council meeting and that in the intervening time, that the ad hoc committee meet and rather than have it in open forum here where we get 30 people in, that we have some representatives who have been very consistently speaking at the mic. Paul and Don might be willing to, to meet, perhaps Sophie and Antoinette.
Unless, unless this, just as a matter of process, unless the council designates who's part of the ad hoc committee or what it consists of-
Okay.
It has to be a public meeting, but non-brown acted because there would be only two council members. So, those folks are welcome to come, but anyone else could as well.
Okay. So, anyway, but I-
Understand, understand.
I think if we have Bartle, Bartle Wells here, one, they can speak to, because they're much more familiar with the law as it pertains to, to this. And also, I think they're pretty good at number crunching. So, if a suggestion was to come up, if we did this a certain way, what would that number be that we could- be, that we could perhaps either put something to bed or not, I don't know. But, but that would be my suggestion, that we delay two weeks on the first reading. And the reason for that is, is that if there is some changes that the ad hoc committee could recommend, that they be incorporated in a new ordinance. If not, this ordinance moves forward.
So, you could, we could-
That's a long motion, but that's, that's trying to-
So, I too would like to make a motion, but I would need clarification on the proper-
So, let me, let me just clarify.
Doesn't the first motion have to be?
The first motion has to be seconded, and if it dies for lack of a second, then you can make it.
But first, let me clarify, so Gary, your, your motion is to pass the ordinance as presented.
No.
And with the first reading, so instead of waiving the first reading, the first reading would be in two city council meetings from now?
Yeah, the next city council meeting.
Okay.
In other words, delay the, the first reading till the next city council meeting.
You're proposing to pass the ordinance, but delay the first reading.
No.
So, you want to postpone it, that's why I'm asking, because there's a difference when you-
Yes.
Okay.
So, you're asking for a postponement?
I'm asking for a postponement till the next meeting.
So, you're making that motion?
I'm making that motion, I think that's what it boils down to.
Same item, move to the-
Correct.
Okay. I will second that motion.
So, knowing that I want to make a motion, what's the proper protocol?
You would make a follow-up motion.
Does that happen right now?
It would happen right now.
And then, does my motion get heard first or yours?
It goes backwards, so the last one presented gets heard first.
Okay. So, I don't, for some reason, my packet doesn't have the ordinance, I don't-
It's the last, last two pages, last two or four pages.
Okay.
Way back.
Page 85, it starts. And page 89 is the second one.
Another point, Gary, are you making this motion for both water and wastewater?
Yes. Good, good point.
Assuming you're seconding both water and wastewater, Chris?
Correct.
So, I would move that we introduce both ordinances and waive the first readings with the caveat that the ad hoc committee has the liberty to, to meet with citizens, and if there are some findings of some significance and they want to bring them back at the next council meeting for us to listen and entertain, that certainly would, you know, I would support that. So, I am going to introduce an ordinance of the city council of the city of Calistoga, California, amending Calistoga Municipal Code, Chapter 13.18 pertaining to water service charges, fees, and rates, and waive the first reading. I believe we'll need a roll call on that.
You need a second.
I'll second that.
In a second.
We have a motion by the vice mayor, we have a second by council member Barnes, and you've captured the caveat, meaning if anything of significance comes back in the next meeting, between the two meetings.
That was only for water, so you can do the same thing for-
Correct, yeah.
Roll call, please.
This is-
Sorry, any further discussion? All right, roll call.
Just to clarify, this is for the water rates only?
No, for water rates and wastewater.
No.
We have to do one at a time, one at a time, and this one that I just read was for water.
Water.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Aye.
Council member Barnes?
Aye.
Council member Lopez Ortega?
Aye.
Council member Kraus?
No.
Mayor Canning?
No. Motion passes.
Okay.
You have a second one.
And I will move an-
Sorry, just as a process, so that kills Gary's first motion.
Correct.
I will move an ordinance of the city council of the city of Calistoga, California, amending Calistoga Municipal Code, Chapter 13.18 pertaining to wastewater, sewer service charges, fees, and rates, and waive the first reading.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
You have a motion by the vice mayor, you have a second by council member Barnes. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Dunsford?
Aye.
Council member Barnes?
Aye.
Council member Lopez Ortega?
Aye.
Council member Kraus?
No.
Mayor Canning?
No. Motion passes. I would like to, for the council's consideration, I would like to direct the ad hoc committee, including the two council members, and appropriate staff and consultant, to convene a public meeting of the ad hoc committee at a designated date and time to entertain further recommendations prior to the first reading of the two ordinances that were just passed, which would be, what's the date? What's our next city council meeting?
It's March 6, but the first reading was already done.
So.
Prior to the adoption.
Prior to the adoption, thank you, sorry. Prior to the adoption, which would be at the next meeting, correct? And if anything of substance comes from that, or for discussion among the council at the next public meeting, you would bring it back? That's for the consideration first of the two ad hoc committee members.
I think the only fly in the ointment there is maybe when we can get Bartle Wells here. Otherwise, we could just say we're going to have it on a certain date.
Okay. Were the two ad hoc members willing to do so?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Are the other three, other two council members okay with that? Staff direction received, thank you.
Can we select a date right now? And see if Bartle Wells can be here, if they can't, then we can-
They're, they're busy with public meetings in American Canyon and other, other agencies right now, so I'll, I'll get them online.
So, you'll post it on, so everyone's aware, it'll be posted on the city's website when a date is established, date and time.
As soon as possible.
We can also e-notify.
Okay.
The other thing is, we need to find a venue, I don't know what's available.
We will figure out a way to make this happen. Okay? Any preferences in the audience, days or nights? Well, Bartles and Wells might be complicated. Mornings or afternoons, afternoons, all right. All right, thank you all for your patience and your suggestions, et cetera. We will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is March 6 in this meeting at, in this space at 6:00 PM.